All right, so now we can conduct our work session for the evening of November 21, 2017. And the first topic is to discuss code review in light of the Lusk Avenue project. I want to say a few comments in advance before we begin discussing it. The November 9th information packet contains a memo I sent to council members and to Manville Heights neighbors via Karen Southard. The memo frames our discussion about events pertaining to the "Kennick House" at 101 Lusk Avenue. I want to read the opening paragraphs of that memo so that people watching on TV and others in the audience will have a sense of what's contained in that memo. So I'll quote a few sentences here. "The events have been painful for many members of the Iowa City community and costly for some. Moreover, the experience has led some members of the community to lose trust in the city council and staff. In my judgment, we need to discuss the events in public so that the community can see we are exercising our responsibility to learn from experience, to consider the views of the public, and to initiate changes in city code or practices if appropriate. With that in mind, the purpose of our discussion tonight will be to consider possible changes in the city code and practices and thereby minimize or avoid the occurrence of similar situations in the future. We will not be second-guessing the technical actions and judgments of individual city staff members or relitigating decisions rendered by the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Appeals, or the District Court. Likewise, we will not be discussing claims of misbehavior on the part of individual staff members." So that's a quote from the memo. The memo goes on to describe and explain the minimal role the council played in the sequence of events associated with the Lusk Avenue house. It also briefly summarizes steps I took after the District Court's ruling back in March. These steps included having conversations with many Manville Heights neighbors, some of you probably sitting over here right now, as well as their attorney, and two members of the Board of Adjustment. The memo also presents six claims I heard during these conversations. They're my understanding of the claims I heard anyhow. We also received an email from Karen Southard on September 19th, which summarizes four provisions of the city code, which in her judgment and that of other neighbors, "have been either chronically misinterpreted or chronically bypassed in cases of 'infill construction.'" With regard to all of the claims, the ones contained in my memo and the ones that Karen submitted to us, I ask the staff to suggest possible amendments to the city code and practices, or to indicate why they conclude, why they think that changes should not be made. The staff did so in a memo dated November 16th from Jeff Frill, our city manager, and Eleanor Dukes, our city attorney. If we conclude that changes should be made, we should direct the staff to make those changes. I think we should also remember that any changes we instruct staff to make are oriented toward the future, not toward the past, and could well apply to other neighborhoods in the city. So I'd suggest, as we go through this discussion, that we deal with the claims one by one in sequence. And I assume we've all read the staff's memo, so we have a sense of what's in that memo and that material can be brought to bear on this discussion. So is that okay with everybody? All right. So the first claim that I heard is, "There is a substantial disconnect between the comprehensive plan's language and the zoning code language as it pertained to the proposed structure. According to this claim, there needs to be a consistent and honest interpretation of the code, one which treats community, safety, neighborhood, and prosperity as being meaningful." So what do you folks think about that claim?
That's a tough one. It's certainly one that I've been challenged by since living in Iowa City. And looking at the zoning code, it is stated that the purpose of the zoning code is to implement the city of Iowa City's comprehensive plan in a manner that promotes the health, safety, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the citizens. And I certainly have felt over those years, at times, that some of the language in the comprehensive plan was not adequately reflected in our zoning code. And if the zoning code is intended to implement the comprehensive plan, it always seemed to me that staff and council would be concerned with wherever there was that misalignment. And I think, given what I consider to be the open-endedness of the zoning code, I'd put a little bit more weight into the comprehensive plan because I felt that there clearly was some area there where interpretation with regard to questions of compatibility and so forth, given the lack of more specific language in the zoning code, would require interpretation of the comprehensive plan and its intent. Now I'm at a position where in seeing especially some of the way the Lusk incident has played out, that we need to put much more emphasis on articulating the zoning code as clearly as possible to try to at least close the gap between the language of the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. So I certainly sympathize with those who have felt the sense of what was described as disconnect. I sometimes think of it as a misalignment. But it does seem the remedy at this point is to work toward a much more articulate language in our zoning code so that I think we can, with that language, all of us as a community, agree that it matches the aspirations and goals of the comprehensive plan.
Anyone else?
I guess I'll weigh in. You know, I think one of the issues that really comes up for all of us is when this code was written, that any of our staff members think that they would be trying to prevent the building of a mini Kennick Stadium in a residential neighborhood. That is the type of thing that was very difficult to forecast. And I think in this particular case, we were brought with a situation where we had to, they had to essentially interpret the code ad is, as is. So to your point, Jim, about this disconnect, I think one of the difficult things is, what happens when the application of the administrative code essentially conflicts with a lot of the broad language of the comprehensive plan? I think it means we need to look at a fix. And I think what I would like, for purposes of our discussion tonight, is to identify a regulatory fix with substantial input from the neighbors and from the community that will match the community's vision for the neighborhood. And I think that's what we have to do, is look forward. I think, Jim, as you point out, we're not here to talk about past actions, but when there are those disconnects that you can't foresee, you try to work with it, you try to fix it, and to get those back into alignment. So that's what I see we're really doing here tonight, is essentially recalibrate the code to align with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I guess I'll weigh in here as well. So John, I agree with a lot of what you're saying. It does seem like this is, I won't say it has come up a lot, but I know that it's come up several times, and it, to me, has brought a lot of community angst to our table and to our discussion. The biggest question that I can even, I kept coming back to, is how? How do we do this? I think tonight, I mean, to simply look at it from this particular situation, that's the reason why we have some of the staff recommendations and what we're going to deliberate on today. But ultimately, I do think we need to talk about this from a greater aspect because I worry, and I don't want to start to talk more about this than is necessary, but I worry that another situation is lurking out there. And so how do we have that conversation? I mean, do we need to revisit the comprehensive plan? I mean, I know that was a lot of work, and so I'm not trying to say that work wasn't important, or that those things at the time weren't important, but something needs to happen. Because I feel like, at least for me in my time on council, when it has come to issues where misalignment or there's been a disconnect, it's been a battle at times. And I don't think that we're in the position, or I don't think we should put ourselves in the position, or the community in the position, of constantly having to come with that community angst and distrust when that misalignment or disconnect occurs. So again, for tonight, I'm focused on what we need to look at as far as the recommendation staff has presented, but I do think, and maybe we'll kick this to a work session or something along those lines, we need to have a deeper conversation as far as what that looks like. Because I know you brought it up, at least initially, I know, Jim, you brought it up a couple of times as well, but we'll need to revisit that. Because I think that in general, folks feel some type of way about when there is that understanding or lack of understanding from where we are saying that where the comprehensive plan is and where the zoning language is.
I felt that a major difficulty was just a general interpretation of the codes posed a big problem with a number of, more than one of the codes. So interpretation was a major problem.
I would agree. I think we've looked at a number of situations over the last, I don't know, number of years, I would say, even since I've been on council, that things come up at various times, whether it's with rezonings, or a building permit or something that people don't expect, and you see that disconnect between the comp plan and the zoning. I think one of the challenges is, the comp plans are written at a much more kind of general aspirational level, and lots of times you've got a lot of different kinds of zoning within those areas. And I think sometimes you're going to have locations that maybe don't match with that comp plan. I don't see that as being the case here. I think it's this one in particular is more of a case of how can we properly regulate infill so that it fits with what's already there. I've got a couple of particular ideas that I'd like to see us look at and that kind of relate to this one. But one of the things I would say is because the council, one of the big things that a council does is zoning and rezoning. I would encourage that we look going forward at taking some time, either through work sessions, or training, or whatever, to spend more time, and maybe we do it area by area across the community, of really kind of going back into those comp plans in a little bit more detail, and then looking at what is the zoning that is available, at least at this time, within those different parts of the community. Because I do think over time, I mean, you get the community involved, they do a whole new comp plan, well, just because you do a whole new comp plan doesn't mean you rezone within that part of the community. And I think that in and of itself can kind of increase some of that disconnect. So I think there is that disconnect, but I also think there's potentially some significant regulatory things that we need to look at. And it's the same sort of stuff we've talked about in different parts of the community. And it's not just related to Manville Heights, but with some of this infill, with, for example, people coming in and tearing down two or three adjacent buildings and combining properties and putting up a huge apartment building if the zoning were to allow that, but doesn't fit in. So those are some things I think we need to be looking at going forward.
Yeah, I want to pick up on your point a bit, Susan. One of the challenges is that we adopted this comprehensive plan in 2013, but all the zoning regulations, or the ones that apply, were created before 2013 and then have been amended at various points in time. I don't know exactly when, we'd have to look at that more carefully. So it's not really surprising to find that in certain instances there are disconnects between the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. And there are all sorts of unique circumstances that can occur. That said, we've definitely struggled with this relationship between the comp plan and zoning code in several specific instances over time. And the zoning code is the regulatory tool. It's what counts in law, not the comprehensive plan so much, right? But that, for me, means that we should try to get the zoning code in alignment with the comprehensive plan, not the other way around. So in other words, the zoning code should be a tool for helping us achieve the ambitions, aspirations of the comprehensive plan. So I think when we get near the end of this discussion, we'll be able to talk a bit about the types of code revisions that the staff suggests as possibilities that we might want to act on as we go forward.
I don't remember if it was brought up, but I had a long meeting with Karen, and then I met with Jeff to discuss a lot of the things that we've discussed. And one of the things she brought up was an automatic trip when a project is changing sizes. So I don't know if that's something that could be put in, or whether that's too vague. It was just one of the things that was brought up during that.
Terry, that's the third claim we'll go to.
Oh, I missed that one.
I'll bring that up in a few minutes.
And I think that was, the other ones are later on.
I felt the analysis Optico's did recently on the zoning in the north side, where they took the zoning and showed what that actually translates to in terms of building volume and mass.
What could happen.
What could happen if you just took those setbacks, which are what regulate to a large extent, that and parking, what's possible. They showed in three dimensions what exactly could happen, and I think many people, when they saw that, were, "My God, that's possible in our zoning code?" So that could be, I think as a strategy or an approach toward understanding outcomes is something that could be very useful moving forward. And I think will be, as it pertains to this, as well as where we've started to conduct form-based code studies.
Yeah, so I think we'll come back to this topic when we get to the very end of our discussion. Okay, so we can move on to the second claim. All right. The second claim is, "Large entertainment venues such as the 'Kennick House' should have their own classification in the zoning code." To continue, "At a minimum, the definition of single-family home should be revised, clarified, to ensure that such structures are not built in RS5 districts." So I just drove by that house, or the one that's under construction, a couple days ago. It's clearly out of scale with the other houses that are immediately nearby. So I just acknowledged that. So it's easy to see why one would say we should just have a definition for entertainment structures oriented toward entertainment uses and keep them out of RS5 districts. I don't think it's that simple, though. So anyhow, would any of you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, when I read staff's response to that, I would agree with your last comment. I think that's much more difficult than it might immediately be perceived. People are building all kinds of single-family dwellings. I mean, as mentioned here, from entertainment venues, people with sports courts and multiple bathrooms and, you know, just, I think it'd be really, really hard from a regulatory standpoint to define what is a single-family home. You can't make the distinction whether people are going to live in it or not live in it. You know, the number of bathrooms, you've got some people who really love to entertain, so they're going to have a commercial-type kitchen almost, or actually a commercial-type kitchen because they do so much entertaining, et cetera. So I think trying to, if people want to give us suggestions and ideas of how to define that, I'd certainly be interested and willing to look at it. But I think trying to actually classify that is a real problem. I go back to some of my earlier comments. I think looking at how a new structure fits into the neighborhood even relative to the size of the buildings that are already there, there may be some ways we can work that into it. Because I think that is certainly a part of what caused the consternation here, not all of it, but that was a part of it.
I agree with Susan on that. And that kind of goes back to our original comp plan discussion and the zoning and how it fits in with the neighborhood. I just found it interesting that in our recent discussions, we were talking about defining the rental properties and actually stating size of bathroom, size of living space, et cetera. But it is difficult to do that for private residents, and that's what the question was here. You know, what is it really? The family itself had said that this is for single-family use, and how can we question that? And so we can't really define the size. That would be difficult, but with rentals, we can. So I found that kind of hard, except to define whether it fits in with the neighborhood of the surrounding area.
So I would agree. I would say that my only thought, though, was thinking about some of the recommendations that we're going to be looking at later on, the timeline of those recommendations, but also thinking about how, and Eleanor, you may have to help me with this, you know, from a code standpoint, we're talking about the definition behind the actual structure, the entertainment venue, and making its own classification. At least that's what this is pointing out. But then I was just thinking of the process, you know? Could you separate and say, "This particular structure by definition would have to go through a different process?" And that made me feel a little bit differently about maybe making it its own classification. So going back to some of the examples, if somebody is going to put a movie theater in their backyard, I would want them to go through maybe a different process because of the fact that it's going to cause issues to the other neighbors. And I've been looking at Facebook comments, reading different emails and everything else. And you know, the question that struck me in general was, "How would you feel that this was in your own backyard?" I mean, I think that's a question that many of the neighbors here are out here tonight. And I was just thinking, if somebody was to do this, and taking away, just using the examples that were given in the memo, if somebody was to do this in their own home backyard, whatever the case may be, I would have a problem with it. You know, with a young child and somebody blaring Goonies or something like that at 9:00 at night, that would be a problem for me. And so is there a way that we can differentiate between, I mean, we're talking about size and scale to other buildings, and the process by which somebody has to go through? Or is that something that is a part of that overlay conversation?
Well, I think you still have to back up and define what the criteria are that identify that particular structure that has to go through this new process. So I think you're back to having to identify bathroom size, what kind of uses are within the home. And one of the things about administrative decision-making is that you have to specify what it is you want the administrator to look at. So I mean, you can certainly go through that exercise, but I think it's going to be a difficult exercise. And when you look at the alternatives that are proposed at the end of the memo, which are really geared toward determining if the structure fits within the neighborhood, judging that structure as it appears in that setting, as opposed to what is in there, how much, how many bedrooms they have, how many toilets they have, what kind of kitchen they have. I think that's where the problem is going to come in by using the classification system.
Yeah, I think the range of remedies that are listed at the back of the memo all have that form-based aspect to it. And I think that's the direction that is being taken to try to address the shortcomings of a more use-based zoning code approach. You know, I would add to that site-related issues, as well as density. I mean, those are, seems to me, to be the three elements. What's the structure look like? What's the intensity of use? And what constraints, if any, are applied to the site itself in terms of the amount of parking, the usable outdoor space, things of that sort? All of which can constrain, as is mentioned at the back of the memo, what the form of that building is. But if you're in a, what's defined as a single-family neighborhood, that in and of itself, I think, suggests certain building types. You know, we heard the idea of house form as governing the form, you know? A duplex can, as long as it looks like a house, does anyone object to the fact that it's two units rather than one? That sort of consideration. But it seems to me that the exterior quality of the building and the form of it is what's of concern. And then it's a question of the neighborhood deciding, are we talking about an historic district? Are we talking about a form-based code? How do we define that form in a more rigorous or not-so-rigorous way?
I'd like to make a request of all of our council members. When we refer to "the memo," please be clear about whether you're referring to the one I wrote or the one the staff wrote, so that people who are listening will...
I meant the staff.
...have a distinction.
I guess going back, sorry, I mean, going back to the administrative use situation, whose burden does that fall on? Is that the individual justifying the use? Or as we come in, from an administrative use standpoint, going back to the many bathrooms or whatever the case may be, who has to justify that use? Because I guess that's another part in my notes where I'm stating that the individual owner has to justify the use as it pertains to, if they want to have 20 bathrooms in their homes, you know, from our administrator's standpoint, checking that, I still feel like that's the justification of the homeowner to come in and have that conversation.
So you're envisioning some kind of system where if the structure you're building in a single-family zone has more than four bedrooms, or more than four bathrooms, or more than so many toilet fixtures, or has a theater, or has a whatever, then somehow there would have to be a different review process for that?
Exactly. Thank you, Eleanor, for articulating that, because I was struggling a little bit.
I mean, I think, I mean, you could do that, but I mean, you could do that, but I think you're going to struggle with identifying what those are. But you can certainly go through that exercise.
So this is an alternative we could consider if we get to the end of the staff's memo and start talking about the various changes to the zoning code that we would prefer to act on. Maybe we'd rather act on one of them rather than this kind of detail of nuancing of particular buildings. I'm thinking also that some of the points that have been made just now connect with the tripwire part of the third claim. You know, like, is there something about the size of the building, proposed building, relative to the existing neighborhood? Or something about the specifics with regard to the internal use that should signal that some, you know, alert, something's going wrong here, it's out of, it's inconsistent with the neighborhood, and something different needs to be done?
Maybe if I could comment on that, Jim. I think so much of this is going to be addressed by a scale and design modification. Go back in time, and instead of a Kennick House, if we had the same house with the same number of bathrooms, the same number of amenities that look like an ordinary house, my supposition is, is I don't think there would have been quite the reaction that there was. You all had the same reaction that I did, which is you think Kennick, you think tailgating, you think, you know, "Let's have a lot of fun." But that's a function of the design, and of course, the scale. But I think had it been a more traditional design, I don't know that there would have been the reaction that there was. So I'm hoping that as we go forward with this, and I think with the tripwire concept, I think Eleanor brings up a really good point. I mean, our staff are the ones that actually have to interpret this, and they don't want to have to get into sort of deciding what the subjective intentions, like, who really is going to occupy as a single-family resident? So much of it's going to be dictated by the scale of it and, I think, the design that I think should be able to address a lot of these issues. And do, excuse me, do it in such a way that there'll be very clear standards that the staff won't have to, you know, sort of subjectively sort of think about what the proposed homeowners want to do with the property.
I agree with you, Rockney, on the size and the scale of building, because previously on that site was just a smaller kind of cottage home in the surrounding area, but there are also some large, very beautiful homes in that neighborhood. But I think there were other things that triggered the neighbors to be concerned besides just the size and the scale and the design of the building. There were many of the codes that they were concerned about, the fire code, the plumbing code, et cetera. So I think there were other triggers that should have sent up red flags.
Yeah, and possible use having to do with foot- Yeah, and possible use having to do with football games.
Exactly, exactly.
And a number of people coming to the house, and parking, and traffic, and those kinds of things. Yeah.
I think when we, you know, come back to just focusing on this, you know, second point, large entertainment venues having their own classification, I guess I'll go back to what I said at the beginning. I don't think we want to try and do a separate classification. I think it's going to be really difficult, if not impossible, to come up with the standards, okay? I think we also would probably, could very easily end up, and it's not that I'm worried about lawsuits, but why go there if you don't have to, of somebody who is building, let's just say, a large, single-family home, and somehow they trip one of these standards that calls it an entertainment venue, so we have a problem there. I think, I mean, I think there was another, a number of things that caused problems with this particular project. One of them was the size and design, okay? As I mentioned earlier, I would like to see us look at regulations for infill that, whether it's through form-based code or some other mechanism, that, and staff can write it better than I can suggest it, but let's say, for example, that you're going to have something that is more than 50 or 60% bigger than the average homes within close proximity. I mean, so immediately, you're getting to something that is substantially different size-wise, you know? So then it comes back to how does it fit into the neighborhood? And again, sometimes this has happened because of taking adjacent lots, and people get more square footage on the land so they can build a bigger house, but it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. It is damaging to the character of the neighborhood. So I'd like to try and tackle it from that perspective, at least partially.
I agree. I think we'd be better off dealing with it through changes in the zoning code.
And there's other, and I think there's other things, like, Kingsley, you mentioned, you know, building a theater in their backyard. Well, I'm assuming if they're actually building something, that's going to have other code issues they're going to have to deal with, and noise issues are always, you know, those are covered under other ordinances as well.
Anybody else want to speak about this particular topic? Okay, let's go to the third claim. The third claim is, Manville Heights neighbors learned about the proposed construction of the quote "kinnick house" unquote almost by accident. Transparency and inclusion are necessary, but in the views of neighbors, neither of these occurred in this case. So the suggestion I heard was perhaps there should be tripwire provisions that trigger, first, when neighbors must be notified that a property owner has applied for a building permit, and, second, when a good neighbor meeting must be held before an infill building permit can be issued.
I think there's major problems there. I think you take any, I mean, let's say you take any ordinary infill lot with an ordinary design for a house of a size that fits, I say fits, that can be subjective, and all of a sudden, you've got to have a good neighbor policy, a good neighbor meeting, and you've got to have notification. I think if, I guess my feeling is, if we can approach this from either form-based code, you know, scale, perspective, I think we take away an awful lot of these issues in the first place. I mean, I think if I were living in that neighborhood and had not known about this, I would be as angry as I'm sure those people were, but I think the frustration is not because a house was built, it was the size and the scale and the design and the belief that this is going to be, you know, an entertainment venue, not really a single-family home. So if you can take care of it with these other mechanisms, I just think we have to be really careful that we're not putting in some tripwire issues that are creating all kinds of work for staff and developers that 99% of the time, nobody cares or, you know? I'm living in an area right now where there's a whole bunch of infill going on. I mean, the area was subdivided and platted a year and a half or two years ago, and every two or three weeks lately, there's a new house going up. I don't expect to be notified, you know, and I think it would be a waste of people's time to have to do that. What's bringing this, obviously, is the exception. So we have to figure out ways to deal with this kind, and I really think scale is the biggest issue and the biggest, the easiest way maybe for us to address it.
But I think it could be an effective interim measure. I mean, I think of, for example, our form-based code for the North Side, you know, that's a two-to-three-year process where we have to really, you know, dig deep into the neighborhood to do all this research. So I think as an interim measure for extraordinary cases, it could be helpful, and we could do it by, if it's significantly, I don't want to get into what the percentages would be, to be some significantly higher percentage that we would work with it. So it wouldn't happen in the vast majority of the cases. I think if we could just do that as an interim measure, I think that would be a very effective tool until we get the form-based code.
Yeah, I would agree to that and add, what came to my mind would be demolition permits, you know, where an existing structure is being torn down that, you know, and again, it's, as you said, Susan, we're not there yet. And so I know in our neighborhood, if we see a demolition permit, there's trauma.
Yeah.
At every step of the way, I would like to reduce any opportunity or instance where trauma is possible.
Trauma is not a good thing.
Trauma is not a good thing. It's a very troubling thing, and it certainly erodes that notion of trust, which I think is right at the core of everything, you know, the city staff and council should be aiming to reduce.
I do think this brings up something that, I like the good neighbor policy, you know? I think that frankly, it helps alleviate some of the pressures that we receive when it comes before council, when we know there's been a good neighbor meeting in some way, shape, or form.
But for every single building permit for single-family homes?
And that's something I thought about as well, because I was thinking about not only the burden that it puts on staff, but, you know, just even the memo, staff mentioned well over 100 single-family permits. So one of the things I did do is just, you know, did a little research and Googled a couple of things, and we have a subscription service right now. Could it be a possibility that as building permits are uploaded or put into our system, there could be a subscription service that then goes out to, not necessarily affected communities, but people that subscribe to the service? I'm just throwing all the alternatives out there, just because from an information standpoint, and that, again, we talk about, you know, even in my own job, talking about, you know, how do we engage with the community? And, you know, in this day and age, you have to engage in every way, not just one way. And so I worry about putting that out there into the ether, but I do, I'm going back to Rockne's point, and this is why I even brought up the discussion around the process regarding the large entertainment venue. I feel like the different, the conversations we're going to have later on with overlays or other things that I think are really going to be a good fit, I worry about the interim. I'm frankly worried about the time in between we get that figured out, that we're not going to have any type of process in place. And this could be, I'm not saying it's a quick fix, but something that we could do to ensure that if this is about being notified, can we do something along those lines from a software standpoint that could help folks around?
Yeah.
Interesting idea.
So let me pick up on that. I agree. I think if we could identify a degree of scale difference between a proposed building and the existing neighborhood, we could instruct staff to assess whether a building proposed for residentially zoned neighborhood is dramatically out of scale, in other words, passes that tripwire, or whatever you want to call it, exceeds that hurdle, and if it is, to notify neighbors that a permit has been applied for, a building permit has been applied for. I think we could do that. But I want to quote a sentence, I guess, out of the staff's memo, which is directly relevant to this. Building permits are issued based strictly on compliance with a set of code standards. Thus, any neighborhood input received would not play a role into whether a building permit would be issued or not. So that's crucial. I mean, we can alert people that some building's been proposed and it's applied for a building permit that's out of scale with the neighborhood, but the staff has to review the permit application in terms of the code as it's written. That's what they have to do. We cannot intervene in that. So I think it would be good to have a tripwire threshold, that'd be a good intermediary step. I don't know what that threshold would be, but I suspect staff could identify such a thing. And then it could be used to alert people so that we don't have a problem with people feeling blindsided and creating trauma like John referred to.
The issue that people still have to understand, though, as you just stated, Jim, is that they may be alerted that that building permit has been applied for, but because those permits are issued based on code and the regulations, they're not going to have any input to whether that permit is issued or not.
Sometimes neighborhoods, neighbors modify their conduct even when they don't have to, and I think that was what the hope with this whole process was, is that residents and neighbors were hoping that these particular landowners would respond and take into consideration. Now, these landowners chose not to do that. So even if we build that conversation, there may be a lack of a regulatory demand, but maybe we have a neighbor saying, I don't want to have the whole neighborhood mad at me, and it just begins a process, so there can be sort of the mutual decision-making.
Yeah, I think extending the duration is helpful in that sense.
With the words codes, oh, sorry. What do you mean, extending the duration?
Extending the duration of when the community or the neighborhood becomes aware something is happening.
Or notifying them more quickly.
Right.
More earlier.
Kind of some of the things we talked about with Rose Oaks, you know, just let the information become known to those affected by whatever the action is going to be, whether a city council can control the outcome or not, I think has some benefit to it.
So I think I hear a pretty clear indication from the council that we'd like to have staff generate a specific proposal about some kind of size threshold that could be used in the fashion that we've just been articulating.
And just so I'm clear, I was on the City of Birmingham, Michigan website that was talking about subscriptions as far as updates to building permits as kind of a process by which, you know, it may not necessarily, because my first thought was a letter, because I see some of those, you know, sticks and the flags or whatever, that you can see that something is going to happen, or building permit is being issued, but something that, again, you subscribe to, anybody subscribes to, and then you see any type of building that's being, somebody gets issued a building permit or wants to issue a building permit, that information would go directly to you.
Certainly, if that could be done through a subscription process, that would be nice, because it hopefully would be less time-intensive for staff.
We keep talking about codes and regulations, those terms keep coming up, and when are we going to trigger people to know about these things going on? But that's what, it boils down to what we're here for, is to look at whether some of those codes and regulations need to be more thoroughly looked at and be more accurate.
Absolutely, and I think we need to really talk about those right at the end of our conversation here. All right, anything else on that particular claim? Let's turn to the fourth claim. Members of quasi-judicial board, no, did I write that sentence? Well, anyhow, I'll read it. Members of quasi-judicial board members need to be trained better. Some, if not all, members of the Board of Adjustment and Board of Appeals appear not to know what the rules are or how the process is supposed to work.
Well, I guess the only response I can give to this, I mean, I have not sat in on any of these board meetings, and I think oftentimes, we shouldn't be there as council So I guess, you know, my only response, I guess, can be from what staff had indicated with, you know, the complexity of some of the cases that these boards hear, and sometimes the infrequency with which they hear. I think the appeals, what, there was two in 2012, two in 2013, and two in 2016. So, you know, how many members of that board were the same in 2016 as in '12 and '13? I don't know for sure. I'd have to go back and look. So it, and the fact that, I think, the more, the more complex and the more contentious the issue, I think, hopefully, the more diligent the board members are in wanting to make sure that they understand their role and are doing things the right way, which thus generates, hopefully, more questions, you know, from those board members during the process. And there are certain limitations about them talking to anybody or asking any questions before the hearing. So I think when you put all those pieces together, it makes, to me, it made a lot of sense when I read the staff memo, okay, this is why you get an awful lot of questions from the board members, and if you do that training, you know, even once a year or whatever, I think when you get into the nitty-gritty of something like that, you're probably still going to have an awful lot of questions based on the details and the nuances of that particular case. And again, hopefully, because people want to make sure they understand the process and are doing the best job they can.
No, I have two specific suggestions with regard to this claim. And Eleanor, I'd appreciate if you could listen carefully to this and see if what I'm suggesting is, you know, legally viable and all that. So one possible action is that in some fashion, we could instruct the Board of Adjustment, the members of the Board of Adjustment, that they can schedule a separate meeting to discuss the procedure for considering an appeal it knows is going to be very controversial. I know that kind of suggestion was in the staff memo. Seems to me like a very helpful thing to do. It would enable the Board of Adjustment members to really think through how, the process that they're going, they need to follow, the requirements they need to live up to, et cetera.
Yeah, I think, as the memo said, I think you can do that. I don't think you can instruct the Board of Adjustment to do that. I think that has to be...
Advise them or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, staff can certainly, and I think that was mentioned in the memo, is that that's an opportunity available to the board chair to initiate, or any board member to initiate, to have a separate meeting ahead of time. It would still be a public meeting. It would still be, it would have to be kind of a generic understanding of process, not the actual hearing on the particular case, but I think that's doable.
Yeah, okay.
Another suggestion was having alternates, you know? If a certain board, I know we have trouble filling boards the way it is, but some of these, it takes a while to learn. If somebody would be interested in being an alternate and sitting in, and sitting in on the meetings and learning the process over a period of time, it's kind of like the next generation. A lot of boards I'm on have a next generation, so they're learning by sitting in on some of these and potentially have an alternate if some, something came up that you needed an alternate vote. I don't know if that's...
Eleanor, are there any legal constraints about having alternates for at least this board of the Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, the number of board members, and I think is statutory, but I could look at it and see if there was any, if there was a possibility we could do alternates.
Given the situation that occurred, I think that'd be helpful if it is legal to do it.
I'll look at it.
The other suggestion I was going to make, I guess, cannot be mandatory, but when I read the transcript of the various meetings the Board of Adjustment held, and then looked at especially the one in which they voted, I think it'd be very helpful if the members could be informed, advised, that they should listen to other board members express their views before indicating how they were going to vote, and also to advise them that the board has a right to move to defer, or to defer the vote to the following meeting. They don't have to vote on it on the very night that, you know, it seems like they should, but they're having a complicated discussion.
I don't think that's an unusual happening with the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, I know, but it didn't happen, I think, on the night that they voted, as best I could read the material. Anyhow, I just firmly believe it's important to kind of hear people talk and hear their views so you can be swayed one way or another, just by hearing the differing arguments. And then, you know, if you're really anxious and aren't ready to vote, but you've heard all this stuff, you want a little time to process it, say, hey, can we defer?
I think that's always an option available, and staff can certainly emphasize that more. I don't know how that's been emphasized in the past.
Yeah, I guess I'm interested in how we're, I apologize, what that looks like. Is it a letter from city council or staff instruction to go back? I mean, I'm in agreement with the separate session in particular, because I think that's a good way of deliberating. But regarding the two other suggestions that you made, Jim, I'm in favor of the vote defer. I think that's, you know, something that we do, and so I don't understand why that couldn't be something that the Board of Adjustment does as well. But, you know, asking them to deliberate before they vote, I mean, I feel like that's technically what they should be doing.
Well, before they indicate how they're going to vote.
Right, sorry, before they indicate how they're going to vote. I don't know how we would, I don't know, I just, I'm thinking about how we would state that.
I don't have the transcript in front of me that you're...
I don't have the transcript in front of me that you're talking about specifically, Mayor, but, but certainly, part of being an impartial and fair decision maker is to listen to the evidence. And I don't know that it necessarily requires, like it does for you when you have a public hear, you know, I don't know that it requires that they listen to each other necessarily. I don't, that may not necessarily be a bad thing. But, but I think the emphasis is on making sure that they listen to all the evidence carefully as a judge does. I mean, that's what a quasi judicial board is, is that they're acting like a judge does. But I don't, I don't see any harm in reminding the board that they, you know, they can listen to each other's views before they vote, or that they can defer if they're not ready to vote. And I, I, you could ask Sarah Walls about that. My guess is that there's some of that already done, because I know they do defer on occasion.
And maybe that could be a part of the statement, you know, they had a statement in here that they changed in regards to the opening remarks to provide a little more education to the community about how they deliberate. Maybe that could be additional thing that's stated within that opening statement to make it clear that we will consider, you know, all the evidence beforehand, before we indicate what we're going to vote. I mean, I'm just trying to think of the vehicle of which we're going to make that happen, any type of way, shape, or form.
Well, I think the word advise has come up several times. And I think just advising them as we get new members on the board, or even annually, each board reminding them of these things would, would be helpful.
So Eleanor, maybe you could talk with Sarah and
Yeah.
kind of come back with us in terms of some language or action that we could follow through on? Okay, anybody else want to say anything on that claim? All right, let's go to the fifth claim. There needs to be greater separation between the city attorney's office and the board's legal counsel, the Board of Adjustments, I guess, legal counsel, at a minimum to avoid the perception of a conflict of interest. This could be accomplished by issuing a competitive request for proposals for on-call assistance to quasi judicial bodies. Well, I observe that the staff's memo indicates that Eleanor, our city attorney, has contacted the county attorney, and the county attorney is willing to have her office provide a reciprocal, what's the term, representation?
We would do it for each other.
And?
They had an issue, then I, my office would represent.
And possibly with someone who's, what's the right term?
In-house counsel.
In-house counsel with one of our neighboring cities. Yeah, so, I don't know. What do you all think?
One thought I had was when I was working for the city of San Francisco and our labor union was involved in contract negotiation with the city. The, the mediators were agreed upon by both parties moving into the negotiation. So one, my thought was, in a case like this, could it be something where both parties would agree to who would be representing the, you know, the parties involved? Or, you know, be, be the legal counsel on this particular issue?
Well, that's different because the mediator is like the board, not the legal counsel for the board. I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to give that some thought, I think.
It's a little bit different.
I think that could be problematic. I think one of the things you have to remember is it's not always easy to find an attorney. In this instance, I contacted three local attorneys, all of which had conflicts or scheduling issues. I talked to Andy Chappell, who was then the civil attorney at the Johnson County Attorney's Office, who I work with quite a bit, and talked to him about whether he had any ideas about who this might be. He recommended the letter firm, and then I contacted the letter firm and then found someone who had this, had a schedule that would permit it, et cetera. So, you know, it's, and that's why I have concerns about the RFP process, because I don't, I, I, it doesn't happen very often. So for someone to put the effort in to respond to an RFP when they might be called upon once every couple of years, I think that's a lot to ask. But, so having someone, another governmental entity that has, that you know has the experience to, to handle these kinds of cases, I think is the best option.
I think Eleanor's idea of the reciprocal representation is really a good idea. Goes right along, I think, with our strategic plan goal of improving intergovernmental relations. So working with the other communities, be it Corvail or North Liberty, I think that's an excellent idea, because I think you still might run into problems with people that are related or know each other. And I think in that instance, I think someone needs to be professional enough to recuse themselves if there's, if they're related in any way to the other party or feel that there would be some sort of conflict of interest.
And just to clarify, this would be for purposes of representing the Board of Adjustment during the deliberative process? And then if that decision is affirmed in district court, the city attorney's office would still be representing the city? Or would this firm still be then representing the city for purposes of defending the outcome before the Board of Adjustment? How would that work?
It really, I think it depends on the circumstances and how far the conflict allegations, you know, that are being made, et cetera. So, I mean, in this case, as you know, the decision of the building official was not reversed. And I had hoped that, that we could represent the Board of Adjustment in that case, given that at that point, the interests of the city and the Board of Adjustment were aligned. But given the kind of allegations that had been made and continue to be made, I thought it would be better to have outside counsel represent them.
Well, I think there's, there is merit in considering the reciprocal representation. I do. I believe I'm hearing that from others.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Can we turn to the sixth claim? All right, so this one is, as I stated anyhow, neighbors also expressed concerns about the actions of specific city personnel. Some of the person, and then, some of the personnel-related concerns are expressed in the email that Karen Southard sent to each of us on September the 19th. And I referred to that right at the outset of this meeting. Her email summarizes four provisions of the city code, which in her judgment and that of other neighbors, quote, "have either chronically misinterpreted or chronically bypassed in cases of infill construction." Or have been either chronically misinterpreted or chronically bypassed in cases of infill construction. Karen Southard also states, quote, "We neighbors feel strongly that city staff must follow city code as intended and adopted by the council," unquote. So I also requested staff to provide information pertaining to each of Karen's four claims, which the staff did. And so we have an opportunity to discuss that now, the four claims that Karen made and then the staff's response to that.
You're referring to these claims, one through four? Is that?
Yeah, yeah. I'll tell you real quickly, what I see in the staff's response is that basically, the court's findings were contrary to the claims made in Karen's email. The court did not uphold the positions that the neighbors took. So I think that's just a fact.
Doesn't he have to defer to the factual findings of the board, though? So had the opposite result occurred, would have he given deference to the?
I think that's the way it typically happens. The court defers to the technical judgment of, or not technical, but the judgment of the Board of Adjustment. But it was a two-two vote.
Yeah.
So it deferred to the two-two vote.
Yes.
I think that's right.
I would say it a little differently. It's a substantial evidence standard. And when it comes to statutory construction, that's a little different when you're talking about how a statute is constructed. And you'll see here, the court went through the analysis of how, how it thought the statute should be interpreted as, as well. I think even if, if, if a court finds that there's substantial evidence, but there was error in the construction of the statute, those are kind of two different things.
I guess along those lines, then, if it had been three-two the other way, do we think it would have been reversed? Or is that sort of where we're going to that, or?
If you want my opinion, I think it would have been yes.
But we don't know.
But we don't know. No.
That goes back to, I think, education of the, the board members, knowing that when and where they can appropriately discuss these things or express their opinion on something before it's actually voted on. Because then that would have been different as far as the number of eligible voters.
But in, but in deference to that board member, if my recollection is correct, it wasn't even in front of the board when that individual expressed their opinion?
It wasn't. It was an email prior to the appeal.
Yep.
I, I just see a lot more to this sensitive lands issue, too, because there's language and the neighbors had talked about the sloping of the property. And, and I have some concerns about that, because as, as it was being constructed, I noticed a lot of trees being removed. And maybe John can describe this a little better, as far as, to me, the trees kind of would be holding that slope up. And if you're removing those trees, won't that perhaps, over time, tend to erode that slope and not give enough support for a large building or a building of that size?
I think that's, you'd have to evaluate that on a case-by-case basis, but, yeah.
It could. It certainly could destabilize the slope.
And to me, the question is, did they follow the sensitive areas ordinance? And, you know, any limitations on tree removal? I mean, we've had cases in the city where I've seen things that I certainly would have preferred not to have happened. But if they fall within, within our ordinances for sensitive slopes or woodland removal, et cetera, then there's not a whole lot I can do as an individual or as a council member, other than come back and talk to council and say, I think we need to change ordinances. So assuming that the developer builder did that work within the guidelines of those ordinances, there's nothing, you know, that we can do in regard to that. I think whether we as individuals, you know, agree, and I think it's pretty clear, if any of us had had the power, we would have maybe not wanted to have allowed this building to go forward. I think the court ruling is, whether, you know, as you read through it, whether you agree or disagree, the court has ruled, there's not a whole lot that we can do with that in terms of moving forward.
That's the way it seems to me. Yeah. Okay, so I now want to mention what draws our attention to, what's suggested as possible courses of action.
I think that's weird.
Possible courses of action that Jeff and Eleanor have directed our attention to. So basically, they suggest that we focus our attention on the zoning code and then identify four, four specific courses of action we could take. I'm going to mention each of them quickly, and then we can probe them. The first is to start the process of, if neighbors want, of creating an historic preservation overlay zone for the neighborhood or part of it. The second is to recognize that we are currently in the process of developing a form-based code for the North Side neighborhood, which, if we adopt it, could be translated into the conditions of the Manville Heights neighborhood. The third is that we could adopt the zoning code, that we are in the process tonight of adopting zoning code amendments that are included in the Neighborhood Stabilization Initiative. That's, I don't know, item eight? Is that included?
It's not in tonight's item. It's the second phase of the stabilization.
Sorry, second phase. So, but it's in the works. Yeah. And the last is to create a design overlay district for the Manville Heights neighborhood. So we've already touched on these a little bit. I mean, in terms of timing, Rockne, you, you were rightly identifying the fact that some of these are going to take time to do. Like the form-based code, code thing, I think that would take at least two years, at least, to
Yeah.
get into play, if, if in fact, that's the direction we wanted to go. And historic preservation, creating that kind of district for part of, all or part of Manville Heights would probably proceed more quickly. But there are procedural hurdles that would have to be brought, you know, that we'd, would have to be encountered. So.
Yeah, I guess, sort of to jump off the conversation, I guess, I would like to punt on this question for this evening. We could perhaps indicate some of our preferences. But to me, I think this is something that we have to work closely with the neighborhood in terms of identifying what seems to me to be the lightest regulatory footprint consistent with preventing something like this from happening again. That seems to be the gist of it. I know that there were efforts in the past to do historic preservation overlay in this neighborhood, and it didn't seem to be. There were some interests, but not unanimous. So I certainly don't want a situation where the cure here causes its own set of angst for the community. So I'm hoping that we can identify what our preferences are. And I know that that's probably what we're going to do anyway, Jim. But I, in particular, am a big fan of the form-based code, and I encourage the neighborhood to look very closely with this. But this is something, especially given, this is a very unique neighborhood in terms of the residential neighborhood next to some incredibly intense development with the University of Iowa, I think with its own unique characteristics. And so I think that the neighborhood will really be best situated to work constructively with our staff to come back with a recommendation.
Yes, yeah, I would agree. I think that, you know, for me, I wouldn't necessarily say we're punting on the issue. We're, we're just simply stating that, you know, there's options here. And I'd rather hear from the community, especially since many of them are here tonight, as far as what option works best. You know, I can, I don't know if we're, are we going to go through some of the options we are looking at or supportive of right now, or?
I think we should probe them a little bit more, yeah.
So again, going back to what I brought up before, as far as timeline being an issue, and I appreciate staff kind of outlaying some of the concerns with each one, or at least some of the issues with each one. The form-based code, obviously, I mean, I'd be supportive of, but you just mentioned that it'd be two years, and so.
And we haven't even adopted it yet, right?
Right, so.
For the North Side neighborhoods.
That was problematic for me. The historic district, I think, Rockne, you already kind of mentioned as far as, you know, what procedural issues come with that. And again, I don't live in the neighborhood, but those were, I was also just thinking about, what would I want to see in my neighborhood? I mean, basically, as I was deliberating and talking with folks, the two biggest ones for me are the pending zoning code changes in the design overlay district. I feel like I'm most supportive of the design overlay district. My question about timeline is still prevalent, as far as what that looks like, how quickly can they get done? I know we're talking specifically about Manville Heights neighborhood, but how does this get articulated across the city? Is this something that we're looking at across the city? I mean, I would think so. I'm trying to make sure I mentioned everything that I want. Those are, so I think that for one and two, for me, would be design overlay district and the pending zoning code changes. However, I do want to again throw that alternative out there that I was discussing previously around that, around that review process. And I'm, I'm really, you know, this is, this is not my expertise. And so literally, as I'm looking through this and thinking about how I would want to see something regulated, I'm also looking at it from the lens of how quickly this could potentially get done. Again, you know, because there's no, there's nothing right now that says that a building couldn't be built tomorrow. Or a building, or, obviously, there's a building permit process and everything else. But my point is, is that we could run into a situation throughout the city. And so wanting to make sure that we have something done quickly, but done well, I think would be a great way of looking at it as well.
Yeah, I'm inclined to, you know, the sort of a short and a long-term answer, I think, or framework to think about this. And in terms of the long-term, I think it is something that, you know, the neighborhood is best, it's best for the neighborhood to try to identify what seems to be the direction to go. But personally, I'm concerned about the short-term. And it's, it relates to, you know, one of the items we'll be discussing tonight on the student rental caps. Manville Heights falls in the university impact zone entirely. That, that poses a threat in my, in my mind to potential That poses a threat in my, in my mind to potential outcomes that none of us want to see in terms of what could possibly happen. So, you know, the pending zoning changes, I think, address some of those issues. You know, what's identified here in the memo speaks to, the staff memo speaks to the depth aspects. I'm not reading anything that responds to the, if you have a wider lot, if there are any controls on the width of the building. So there, I would want to ask council to consider asking staff to look at this question of interim zoning code changes that may need to be necessary in order to prevent, maybe not a kinnic house, but, but something large that, you know, with, again, we're faced with a situation where the student, you know, the occupancy cap is being lifted of unrelateds or doesn't, won't apply January 1st. That could trigger the, you know, permits for very large homes, for large occupancies, particularly on large lots. So that's what worries me right now, and that we need to address that.
What, the way I guess I would look at this is, I think our, I think our short-term, and you kind of called it maybe interim, John, I think is our pending zoning code changes. I want to look again at what we're looking at that's, that's not going to be on tonight, but the longer-term ones that are going to come back kind of in the second phase.
They're not zoning code changes tonight, they're housing code changes.
I'm sorry, housing code changes. But looking at those, again, because it, again, this is an issue that we've talked about, you know, for at least four, five, six years, specifically with the North Side at that point in time of, because that's where the demand has been the greatest in terms of the rental permits, of people, you know, especially buying up, say, a couple of adjacent lots and then putting up very large structures, you know, that do not meet the character and good infill development. So I think trying to look, and I think that would also help then, you know, in these sorts of cases, any other infill kinds of cases within the community. So I'd like to make sure that we're looking at that in those things that are coming forward as well. In regard to the other three options on here, the, you know, the design overlay district, as we've mentioned, the form-based code is at least a couple of years out. And the historic district has not been high, has not necessarily, I guess I would say, maybe well-received, or at least not by a large enough percentage of the people in the area. I would like to see the people in Manville Heights come back and tell us, besides these potential zoning changes that we might do, what else do they think they would like to see for their neighborhood to provide maybe either more or long-term protection? And once we have those zoning changes figured out, they may or may not decide they want anything more. But I do not want to sit here as a council member and try to impose things upon that neighborhood that they don't want.
Well, I think, Susan, I think the neighbors have expressed a lot of their concerns. It's a lot of health and safety kinds of issues regarding not just zoning codes, but a lot of the codes, as I'd mentioned earlier, the sewer codes and the fire codes, those kinds of things they have concerns about, and they have expressed those to us. And I think those are things that shouldn't be glossed over and also need to be looked at and studied thoroughly.
Oh, yeah, I'm not dismissing those at all. I'm just saying with the four that we're looking at here, you know, with the historic, the form-based, and the design, I don't want to try to impose those on those. Any, any other regulations that we have in place as a city, I am absolutely and totally supportive that they are, that we are following those regulations.
And we need to be. And I think, I think we all, staff and us, and the boards and commissions, need to learn from this situation and avoid any kind of that, not minimize, but avoid any similar situations in the future.
Staff, staff believes it interpreted the codes correctly. The district court affirmed that we interpreted the codes directly. So if you want to have more discussion about that, we should, but the premise I can't accept.
I believe we should. There were several, from a healthcare perspective, being a healthcare provider for many years, there were a lot of issues that were brought up that I find very concerning.
Instructions to the staff beyond what we've already identified in, with regard to the earlier claims. I think one thing we're hearing pretty loudly is that we do not want to impose any one of these particular code revision alternatives on the people in Manville Heights. So we need some kind of process by which they can be involved in discussions with us or with staff so that we can get some sense of which of them, so that we know everybody understands what's involved in those, at least three major code alternatives. And then give us some sense of whether the neighborhood wants us to act with regard to any one of them. Like if, if the neighborhood said to us, we want to pursue the historic preservation overlay alternative, we could get that process underway pretty quickly. But we don't want to say, that's what we're going to do. We need feedback and interaction. But with, there is that fourth alternative that has to do with the residential occupants, I'm trying to find my own notes here, the zoning code amendments included in the Neighborhood Stabilization Initiative. Those are underway, and they will have an effect in Manville Heights immediately after they're adopted. So they include provisions that would limit how deep a house may extend into a lot and establish a minimum rear yard open space requirement. It's not perfect, but it would help. And then beyond that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to suggest, is the kind of the opticus analysis where you look at, you know, we make the revisions, and then we look at scenarios of what could be generated by those new changes with, or that, you know, with the revisions, and see if that seems acceptable or not. Without getting into the, you know, there's a much higher level of detail involved, both in the outcome and in the process with the other three. But in the short-term, you know, I think this volumetric component is the, you know, a key starting point, you know?
Boy, I'm sorry, what do you mean volumetric?
The square footage of a building, and its mass and bulk, size and bulk.
So this gets back to the point, the topic we discussed earlier about a tripwire with regard to the size of a building relative to the existing size and scale of the other buildings immediately nearby. So if we had that kind of tripwire provision, as well as initiated these neighborhood stabilization components about depth of yard and so on, those would help.
But I would say, Jim, it's not, to me, it's not just having a tripwire provision in terms of notification, it's actual zoning changes.
Well, we got to get there.
I know, because if we don't have zoning changes, it doesn't matter if you've got the tripwire, if they want to build it, they can build it.
Yeah, I agree.
But I realize it takes time, I get that. The other thing I would just like to emphasize is, we have had this discussion here tonight because of what has happened in Manville Heights, okay? But this could happen, and this is something that the members of that neighborhood have brought up, this could happen anywhere in any of our neighborhoods that happen to have either an empty lot, or somebody went in and bought a building and took out a demolition permit and ended up with an empty lot. So as we sit here and talk about these four staff recommendations, and most of our comments have been focused upon what the Manville Heights Neighborhood Association can do, I would like to make it very clear to anybody and everybody in this audience or anybody listening to this discussion, that this is important for every neighborhood in the city. Now, obviously, every neighborhood is not going to qualify for historic district overlay, all right? But certainly, these others may be of interest to them. And I think people across the city need to be aware of what has happened, aware of the changes that we are trying to work our way through to make sure that this doesn't happen, that there's no perfect solution. And hopefully, it won't happen again, but if people want to make sure it doesn't happen in their neighborhood, they need to get involved, they need to start talking with each other, start talking with us. You know, what would they want in their neighborhood, or what would they want to see as zoning changes that might be citywide as well? So this isn't relevant just to the Manville neighborhood area. So I just want to emphasize that.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it is particularly a concern in my mind in the university impact zone, but it could expand beyond the impact zone.
Any further discussion? All right. I think we're going to stop there. I know you understood the rules are that we have the discussion, but I also want you to know that if you want to speak about our discussion, et cetera, during the public comment period of our formal meeting that starts at seven, you certainly are free to do that. If you want to write us and complain to us about, you know, all sorts of things we're doing wrong or doing right, you absolutely have a right to do that. And.
And certainly feel free to contact us or staff as we've talked about these potential four paths of going forward as to what you either have questions about or might see working for your neighborhood. Please feel free to reach out to us.
Okay, with that, I think we're going to move to our next agenda item. Thank you all for coming. We can wait a minute or two here. Okay, the next topic is clarification of agenda items.
I have 4D4, the Iowa City Downtown District budget.
Yep.
Jeff, help me out here. I thought, and maybe I'm just remembering different budgets and I didn't look back, I thought that there was a city contribution, maybe that was before, for a particular project or something, but I didn't see that articulated in the budget this time around.
This is really just showing how they plan to use the Schmidt property tax dollars, the Schmidt levy itself. We do not make a direct contribution to the Iowa City Downtown District, but we have partnered on a number of different initiatives. That could be special events and festivals or things such as power washing the alleys we partner on. We've partnered on lighting projects and a whole number of things, but those are typically done through a separate memorandum of understanding. What you're seeing tonight on 4D4 is simply how they plan to allocate the property tax dollars from the Schmidt levy.
Yeah, I don't have any issue. I was just asking because I feel like I remembered seeing something where it was designated that we had given some amount of money, and I think they're doing a wonderful job, so I'm not, I'm not saying anything about that. I will say though, and I don't necessarily know what, maybe, maybe I'll bring this up later, but I would be interested in having a conversation about the organizations we give money to and the public benefit they are providing, specifically from a diverse perspective, ensuring they're incorporating inclusivity and diverse clientele or programming with what they're doing. I'm not saying this about the Downtown District, it just reminded me that I wanted to bring this up, just in general, about organizations that we give money to. I'm not sure the appropriate time to talk about it.
Could be a work session topic.
Probably add it to it.
Work session.
Okay. Is there support for that idea?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm seeing nodding heads.
Sure.
Okay. We'll put it on the pending list.
Eleanor, do I need to recuse out of the proposed budget, the Downtown District, or?
We give Terry money?
I mean, we don't, we just pay rent. We're not, we don't, so I don't know how that works.
I don't think so, because the levy is already there.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any conflict, so.
I mean, you didn't vote on the actual, whether to create the Schmidt because he had a voice in that as a.
Right, I removed myself for that.
I don't see that as.
Okay. Just wanted to check. I don't want to get in trouble with just three meetings left.
Right, throw him out.
Are you on the, I mean, do you have some?
I'm not on the board or anything. Nope. No.
I have a request, and I don't know if we have time to respond to my request, but on the map associated with the rental cap, I was interested in seeing if we could insert on that the, the university impact zone, that one-mile radius that defines the impact zone.
I thought it was already on there.
Yeah.
There's a boundary on it already, isn't there?
Well, there's a boundary on the rental.
On the rental map?
Yeah, but it's not a, it's not a circle.
It's like two separate maps.
Well, the university impact area is not a circle.
I might be able to shed some light. The university impact area map was specifically created at the time we were doing the stabilization effort for the multifamily. So it is slightly different than what we're now considering, I think we need to consider for the, the single-family duplex issues that we're dealing with now. So while it was the, some of those, those comp plan efforts that we made in the Central District related to our, our boundaries of the university impact area and helped us draw that map, it was, you know, we were doing that for a specific, for specific reasons at that time. And maybe, you know, while some of it's similar, I think there are some differences, and I can go into that more in the presentation later, or I can talk about it now, if you want me to.
Well, my concern was that, you know, I was looking at all the, when Jim asked for, you know, where, where is development occurring with housing that tends to be, we suspect, student-oriented? You know, I put on that university impact zone one-mile radius, and pretty much everything fell within that radius.
Yes, that is true.
So, so my feeling is, is that the threats with respect to neighborhoods that, or districts as we're defining them, that fall below whatever we set the cap threshold at are going to be the most threatened.
Right. And I think just along the edges there, there might be some differences because at the time we were looking at multifamily zones. So I think there's some edges along there that we may want to expand the boundaries of this particular area to respond more to the Central District subarea boundary, which is slightly different than the impact area boundary, but because we were talking about multifamily at the time. So we may want to conclude a little, a little more adjustment to those east side boundaries. The west side boundaries are pretty similar to what we were talking about.
Okay. Well, we can talk about it on item nine, but I, it just seemed to me there was a correlation between that radius and where I see.
Yeah, I think that's definitely true, and it was one of the factors that we considered when we created those boundaries.
Okay.
Was that influenced by the university, similar to what we're doing today?
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Any other agenda items?
4 of 7, James McCoy, Iowa Municipal Carbon Fee and Dividend Resolution.
Yep.
Is that now a time to bring that up?
Sure, I understand Jamie's talked to all of you.
Yep. A lot of great conversations, very interesting concept. The only thing I wondered was whether this was something that would be in the form of a resolution or a proclamation, or what the council thinks of that. Certainly to the extent that we have any authority, I think it, it looks like something that, I think they're trying to get a lot of the municipalities in support of this to get legislation done at the federal level. So I'm supportive of it, consistent with whatever authority we would have in terms of a resolution proclamation.
So Eleanor, we could do it either way, right? I think we should do the resolution. And I say that because that gives each of us an opportunity to vote aye or nay, you know, whereas with the proclamation, really, it's me just kind of spouting off into the ether.
The difference, a proclamation is not an act of the council, a resolution is.
And I agree with that. In conversations with him, I expect, expressed concerns that did a detour from our climate action steering committee and our consultant, and he assured me that, no, this is a compliment on the federal level, so I would be very much in favor of it.
Yeah, I think it'd be very complimentary.
Great conversations, by the way, too.
Yeah, he's worked really hard. Yeah, he's worked really hard to, you know, advance the carbon fee and dividend idea. Okay, so I think we would like to have a resolution, if we could have it on our next agenda, that would be great. Any other agenda items?
Item 12, the appointments and vacancies.
Yeah, we're going to skip that tonight.
That, I was wondering if we could...
We're going to defer action on that tonight.
There were a whole number of applicants.
I know, 41 or whatever applicants for one, for one commission.
Will we notify them that we're postponing?
No.
Okay.
We haven't, and it won't, won't affect when they start.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know, we're pretty much out of time. We could at least get one packet, info packet discussion, November 9th.
And the November 9th one IP-3 with the invitation from the League of Cities Municipal Leadership Academy.
Yeah.
Even though I'm like two years into my term, I, I would be interested in attending that.
Oh, well...
People thought it would be helpful.
I think you should, you should. Sign up.
Thank you. If there's nothing else on November 9th, I had some comments.
Okay, well, we'll see what's, what we can do in two minutes.
Okay.
So November 16.
November 16th, IP-7, the memo from Animal Services Supervisor Liz Ford about urban wildlife and deer. And I just found that interesting and timely, because I was riding with my 10-year-old grandson in the car, and I talked about the deer situation, and, and he says, "Well, Grandma," he says, "what do you expect when you're taking their habitat away?" And it really gave me food for thought, and I would be, I would definitely not be in support of any sort of hired killer to decrease the population of them, because I think there are other critters, squirrels, and woodpeckers, et cetera, that are also very damaging. Personal stories about that, but, so I would not be in favor of anything like that.
It's interesting seeing the data, given the communications we've gotten over the last several months, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad that we're going to try and do the survey, because I've had lots of people talking to me about it. And if the survey data indicates it, I, I would support a hunt like we've, of some sort, like we've done before. I think they get sick, they starve to death when you get too big a herd, and so it's, it actually is a much more humane way of dealing with an overpopulation than doing nothing and letting them die of diseases or starvation, so we'll see what the data says.
Yeah, I, I've heard many comments from neighbors about what seems to be an increase in the presence of the deer, and we saw a buck in our backyard not too long ago, and, you know, I mean, just one, just one that, that particular time. And, you know, we are trying to promote, some of us anyway, you know, local foods, gardening.
How about some venison?
It's a little, little difficult.
A venison roast?
Making headway on that if you have deer roaming through your, your backyard.
Just put more hostess up for...
So I'd like to mention IP number six, which is the City Manager's November 14th memo about student-oriented housing, or at least what appears to be prominent, predominantly student-oriented. So if I counted correctly, it reveals a net increase of 4,021 bedrooms, primarily serving the student market since 2015, or under construction and would be completed by sometime in 2019 at the latest. Most of them have been privately developed at about 1,200, or in nude arms at the university, and I'm talking net here again. So, and that's in Iowa City alone, it excludes similar housing in Coralville. That's a huge increase. So I think it's really helpful to see that data and have it in mind when we talk about related issues.
Yeah, thanks for requesting it, that's a good piece of information.
Okay, I think we should stop there. Does it, well, does anybody have any other questions about that information packet?
Just a congrats to the Housing Authority.
Yes.
Oh, for sure, absolutely. Okay, why don't we, we'll have to reconvene right at the end after our formal meeting to talk about updates on boards and commissions.
Yes, because I need to, definitely.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, so we're done for, with our work session for now.